Good evening, everybody. It's 5:20, I believe, and we want to call the meeting to order. A special board meeting on February 3, 2025, and I'm calling the open session to order. Could I get an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. And can I get a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have the agenda hearing period now. And we have asked, we've been asked to have Mrs. Janet Hassan to speak. I have to raise a question for you, Ms. Hassan. It says in the CSBA policy, if time is being ceded to you, I need to ask the people that are ceding it to you if they are ceding you the time. And I don't know whether your two people are here to cede you the time, which according to CSBA rules, I can't allow. So I'm just letting you know that that is a policy that is in existence right now.
Okay.
And it's always been in existence, but up until now, when I look at the room and then I can ask you, are they here to give you your time? You can understand the predicament that we would be having. You could say, I had 50 people or something like that.
Sure.
So I'm going to give you the time that you asked for.
I am.
But from here on in, I'm making a public notice to everybody. You cannot cede time to somebody and say that you ceded time unless they're here and I can say to them directly, did you cede them the time?
I appreciate that. And just for, just for the purposes to continue, if at like last time I had to appear on Zoom and somebody ceded time to me and it was okay, how does that work if it's on Zoom?
They have to be able to, I have to be able to speak to them and say, do you, do you cede this time?
Okay.
And if they're not around and I can't ask them, even if they might be on Zoom, I mean, I can ask them on Zoom, but they must be able, I must be able to ask them, do you cede the time?
So if they ceded their time because they can't make it, it's filling out the form?
No, that is not the issue. I just want you to understand.
Yeah.
I'm going to grant you the time, but I'm making an official announcement out there for anybody who's listening and so that the members of the board know that I've done the research on it and I'm going to adhere to it from now on.
Okay.
Because I cannot let another people speak if they don't give me the approval of their, giving their time away.
Absolutely.
So I'm, go ahead, you have nine minutes then.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here, I believe, to speak on Agenda Item E, anticipated litigation and teacher dismissal disciplinary action. It's hard to say exactly. I see you shaking your head. I don't know, this is a closed agenda, it's very, you know, quiet, so I don't know I needed to say what I'm speaking on, so hopefully, is that okay? I'll just speak so I don't run out of time. But it appears that this has been an item frequently appearing on the agenda, which is kind of disheartening and alarming. To your point, Mr. Stewart, when we were talking about before, you analyze the data as you should, but I want to know where everyone is getting all of the data. That's a concern of mine. We've already established regarding Mr. Carey, all that he's done for the school in the past 20 years. I think that was well established on Tuesday and with the petition. But have we established why this is happening now? After 20 years of dedicated service and no issue from students or parents? And I don't think that we have. It's also been well established how disruptive and harmful this has been to our students. You've all received countless emails asking for accountability, and yet we're here at week seven, we still have a sub, the kids aren't enrolled in the SMC program. So we haven't established why those concerns haven't been addressed. So what I'd like to look at is what hasn't been established. And I'm concerned about bias and hypocrisy and why this investigation is taking place, what it is about and how it's being handled. I can't accept the administration hiding behind the excuse that this is a personnel issue, is 100% a student issue and an issue of accountability, transparency, and integrity. I've asked questions regarding my son's education, that's a student issue. As a parent, I have the right to know what is happening with my child's education. There is a parent transparency protocol, it's called PTP, I believe, and it says it's the legal and ethical principle that parents have the right to access information about their child's education, including any significant developments happening at the school, allowing them to make informed decisions about their child's learning experience. As this is established protocol, then I should have my questions answered. I want to be directed to the protocol for dealing with allegations against teachers and administrators. I want to know the designated timelines and who are the impartial, objective investigators and decision makers? Where do you get your data? What are you looking at in your investigation? As I have a great deal of information and knowledge that no one is inquiring about, so who makes these determinations? I want to know. There should be a protocol, just like in the parent-student handbook, there's protocols for all the things that have to do with children. I want to know what has to do with the teachers and the administrators. Because as my son's education and safety is impacted by having administrators on campus who have been accused of crimes, and his class has been turned upside down, negatively impacting his education, experience, and opportunity, and he has been the subject of continued harassment and mistreatment by administrators and subs, I'm entitled to know why and that these decisions being made are fair and objective and without bias. What has taken place in this school, and last semester especially, is deeply concerning and warrants investigation. I do not believe that is a coincidence that at the beginning of the school year, at your August 7th board meeting, Professor Carey addressed the board asking for transparency regarding the reorganization of the CTE program to be placed under BHEA. He asked for the respect to be at the table when these determinations were being made. He requested to understand and voice opinions and asked why they would not meet with the CTE teachers as a group, but only individually. At the September 26 PTA council meeting, Dr. Seaman was very defensive. He was disrespectful about the teachers he was talking about, and he was kind of gaslighting and deflecting in his response to members asking about the kids attending skills because of this restructuring. He called out numerous times the four teachers who had concerns, as had been discussed a month prior, and his response was that, quote, "If they are unable to attend, then we will sidestep them and find others to represent us. If you are not on the bus, there's the door. I'll pull over to the curb." And then he went on to discredit these teachers. So that's pretty cavalier and very unprofessional for how you regard teachers that have been at this school for decades, way before any of these administrators. Also extremely concerning are the violations and continued harassment and censorship of these KBEV students. If this witch hunt only had to do with Professor Carey, why do the students continue to be treated poorly? Why are they being watched? Why is the KBEV studio under lock and key? I want to know who this sub was in my son's classroom during finals week who refused to reveal his identity. He said he was Mr. A, and when the kids asked who he was, he said, "I can choose to define myself however I want, and I still do not know who this person was watching my child." None of these things make me feel safe as a parent. This is not just a lack of transparency, these are red flags waving right at you. If Professor Carey has secured grants and funding for KBEV, as was mentioned in last week's board meeting, where does that money go if CTEs are placed under the BHEA umbrella? Which, although I don't know the half of it, sounds like a ridiculous restructuring, but where does that funding go? Does it get divided among the other educational classes, or does it get taken for what will now be the new program that Dr. Seaman is proposing, since that might be under CTE now? I'm just curious. I want to know what that's about. I recently heard someone say, when someone raises their hand to get your attention, always pay attention to what the other hand is doing. So as you continue to spend so much time and energy and resources on all of the disciplinary action, the negative publicity, the lawsuits, what is truly happening with this restructuring? And where are our finances in our district truly being allocated? What is the other hand doing? Why is this administration so set on sidelining Professor Carey, as demonstrated by the enormous amount of support and love you've seen? He is an institution at Beverly Hills High School. I believe many students said, "He is what's right about Beverly." So after 20 years, why is this happening now? I've been in this district my whole life. I've also spent my life and career looking into people's motivations and behaviors. There feels like there's some disingenuous administrators here who do not know how to work with children, despite how they make it look on paper, at board meetings, and on social media. And their motivations are not pure, and the price our children are paying is extremely dangerous and concerning. You are the ones who have the ability to truly investigate and look into what this is really about. My youngest is almost out of the district. For those of you with younger children and grandchildren, I strongly urge you to look at the other hand. There is no place for this in this community. These administrators have violated our children's rights and our rights as parents. If you continue to back them and promote an environment of intimidation and censorship, you'll be violating the legal and ethical oath you made and your promise to protect our students. I am hoping for the sake of our children and the sake of our district, your priorities are in the right place. This is a district making or breaking moment, truly. I expect answers to my questions about my son's education, as well as your protocol for investigation. Too much time has passed, currently just speaking for myself, and violations against my son, so for legal, legal purposes. This district has been in violation of Education Code 87623, 48907, 66252, Penal Code 626, the Williams Act. You have violated my child's 504, and you've also been violated, in violation of his First and Fourth Amendment rights. That's a lot. This is serious. Please don't take this lightly. If I need to go to the next level to pursue legal action, I will, but it will not be for monetary gain, it will be for accountability. I have emailed all of you. If this is the only way that accountability is going to happen in this district, then that is what I have to do. And to be transparent, as I told you, Mr. Stewart, I am an alumni, I'm a parent, but professionally, I'm a social worker. My specialization was school social work, and I have made it my life's work to support and protect children. I do not take this lightly. I don't think any of you know me because I've been in this, my first child was here since 2008. I don't typically speak at meetings. It has to be a really big deal for me to come. So I hope that you can understand that this is very serious for me. There are many people who are in agreement with me, but they've been too intimidated by those in power to speak. It's unacceptable, and that intimidation can't continue to exist in this district. The 845, last time I checked, petition signers, as well as everyone else who is very rightfully concerned, but doesn't have the power to speak right now or watching. It's already been indulged for too long. Please, please. Thank you. I know. I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to me again. I hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move on to the discussion about executive order N 6-25. That was issued by Governor Newsom on January 14th, I believe.
Yes.
2025. And something you want to open with, or do you want us to?
Yes, please, if I could. Thank you, President Marcus. Good evening, everyone. So this is just a follow-up to the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago with the public order, and I just want to let you know some of the steps that we've taken along the way since that meeting. We've been in full alignment with the executive order by accepting students that we know and have ensured that our enrollment, it remains within the capacity and resources that we have in our school district. We do have a commitment to help our neighbors, but to also ensure that we're providing a high-quality education for our residents as well. I want you to know that as students have come in to register, it's a very complex process. I mean, every single person, this is high school level, so this is, each transcript has to be individually reviewed and evaluated one at a time with a counselor. And so we were then sitting and looking to see what our, our class sizes are, how many students a specific teacher can have. And so we have done that. It's been a slow process. This is a very similar process, that's what's happening in Santa Monica, Malibu Unified. But we have consistently gone through each transcript, each registration enrollment, and you can see that, I gave you some updated notes on, that we have about 47 displaced students across all four high school levels at ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. This is, we're at a place now where we have, if we take more applications, more registrations that come in, and looking at transcripts, there's no place to put that student. So it really comes down to a matter of having that resource, of having a teacher that's available. It's not about the size school that we have, it's not about the construction, it's not about the people and their perception of this being an under-enrolled high school. This is a high school that is staffed with the number of students that we currently have. And so we're very happy to align ourselves with the order to have our 47 students come in and join us until the end of this school year. But anything beyond that, we're going to have to start hiring staff to do that for the next three and a half months. So I just want you to know that. The other thing I just want to follow up with is that we, we have heard from people, we do know that there is a long line of people that are, have either completed registration information, and we're at about 151 that have expressed interest. If, if we start taking more applications, we know that that, within seconds, that will be then sent to somebody else, another friend, and we will have hundreds of people coming, and we just don't have the staff. So I do want you to be aware of that. I think our next step is to provide some communication back to families so that they are aware of where we are and that we have maximized the resources and the capacity that we have with the staff that we have. And so that's going to be the next step for us, but I wanted you to have an opportunity, just transparently, to see where we are, the people that we've been able to enroll and the people that, that, that number of people that are still wanting to, to enroll in the school district. So we have received information as well from the county, looking at this differently, looking at the order differently, and so we have that to handle, we have to communicate back to them. But it's not anything short of us having to go out and hire new teachers is our next step.
Thank you. I would like to give everybody a chance to go around on this. Ben, Remy?
I was just wondering, you said 150 students are, like, wanting to enroll. Do you know, like, it's split into what, in each school or each, like, elementary, the middle school and high school?
Great question. It's predominantly at the high school level, and I believe that we have seven requests for the middle school. Is that right, Mrs. Collins-Williams?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One question for that. None of those seven lost their homes, is that correct? They are, they just want to switch schools now. It's an opportunity and they want to take advantage of, so they think they can take advantage of it, is that correct? None of the seven that want to register and enroll, there's a difference between register and enroll here. None of them lost their home.
Good evening, board. To my knowledge, the information that we have received as part of the enrollment process, we asked everyone to fill out a questionnaire, and to my knowledge, we do not have anyone who's listed that they've lost their homes. We had some people enroll as residents because they have relocated to Beverly Hills itself and are actually residing here. However, of the 151 pending requests, it is my understanding that none of those students are, have lost their homes.
One additional question, in being able to identify that they've lost, that they want to come in, that they moved in. You know, it's very difficult in that short period of time to get proof, like a driver's license and bills, utility bills, what they have to have. Have you been able to verify some of these? I'm sure you have, but that's my thinking. How quickly can you get a new driver's license to prove that you live at this address?
So the families that have been displaced, they provided copies of a rental agreement, and then they are following up with the other items. So they have provisional enrollment until they're able to update those other items. But we did verify the residential lease.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Lot to unpack here. One, I want to bring up, Dr. Breggy, you had made a comment about how the enrollments that have happened so far, and just to correct me if I'm wrong, you, you'd said that the decisions that have been made have been in full alignment with the executive order.
Yes.
I'm very confused by that, because I remember two Thursdays ago, or, you know, three Thursdays ago, we did have a meeting on this executive order where we all discussed what our understanding of the executive order was, which I thought we were very clear on that part, where we had talked about the whereas, paragraph five, saying that we were obligated to immediately enroll students who are now unhoused as a result of the fires, and then paragraph, I believe it's four or six of the orders section that, saying that we are urged to extend every effort to support and facilitate. And then we had asked for a breakdown of how many people that we can handle and a few other questions, and I thought that that was kind of clear. Then, of course, we had this LACO interpretation where, as Ms. Collins-Williams had just, had references this optimal word of displaced, which then, in their interpretation, expanded the understanding of this order into people that were just displaced by the fires, which could also mean the loss of their school, it could be air quality, it could be umpteen number of things. I could have been displaced because I was, you know, emotionally affected by it. So then, all of these people were onboarded under the LACO interpretation, not our own interpretation that I thought that we all agreed upon, and now we've put a halt to new people, where, Dr. Breggy, now you're saying that we are in full alignment with the interpretation, but I don't know full alignment with whose interpretation. And then, now you're saying that the 47 people that we've let in under LACO's interpretation is the maximum that we can handle. So with all due respect, I'm shockingly confused as to which interpretation is the, we're in full alignment, and I still have not seen our original question of how many people that we can handle, but now we're being told the ones that we have now is the cap, and we have all these other people.
Yep. I can answer that, Mr. Stewart. So, and I understand the, the confusion behind how we went about presenting the information. The, the number of people that we can admit is 47. And so that is without then getting any new staff. So the direction that I was provided was to, to enroll people to the, into where we have, this is the resources we have. This is, this is the staff that we have. Otherwise, that would take, so when I say that these, this is in alignment with the order, every single person out of the 47 would fit being in the order of being affected by the wildfires. So that's...
Yes, but that was not our interpretation of the order. That was LACO's interpretation of the order. Our interpretation that we had, you know, in this room was that we were going by paragraph five. Even Vice President Manishari had said that even her personal preference of what she wanted to see first were people that lost their homes, and now we're saying that literally nobody that we have let in has lost their home. Is that correct?
That's what we're aware of.
Yes, correct. To my understanding, based on the information provided by the families, yes.
So, 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 in other words, in full alignment, which version of this are we in full alignment with? And it sounds like it's LACO's version and not the one that we had.
However, we, we do have now at least one family of four students who did lose their home and who actually moved to Beverly Hills.
Well, and that's wonderful. But I'm just talking about...
Yes, there are people who have lost their homes and who have moved.
Sure, but the predominant number of people are people that have not.
By and far.
So when we're talking about that we're in full alignment with this document, I am not in full alignment with this document because it's going based upon the alignment of what a third-party organization has said and not by what this board has said. So this is where I'm very confused. And then, just magically, when, for three weeks, we've been waiting for that number, now we're being told here that the number is 47, and lo and behold, we've already accepted 47, so now we're capped. It's just, the flow of information here has been pretty shocking, and now that we are saying that we are in full agreement with this document, but we're not in full agreement of what we agreed upon...
But, you know, one thing that was made clear to me by your most recent email, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Breggy, is that, so when the order was given, it now seems that Los Angeles County, right, which is very different from all of California, is, is more restrictive, correct? More restrictive in, in permissiveness. And so that, we are essentially saying, okay, we're LA County, so we are going to interpret and, and sort of follow more of the mood of LA County, which is more aware of the limited resources that we have in this county versus like some of the more rural parts of this big state. And so by that, we are able to still be in alignment because we have taken off a subsection and sort of said, hey, we're LA County, and LA County is allowing for more restrictiveness. Is that correct?
Can I say something?
But I wouldn't say, I mean, I'd say it's the opposite. They're allowing for more inclusion. It's broader. We were being more restrictive and they were being broader.
It's broader, but, but both are saying to immediately accept students.
Yeah, can I say something real quick?
Well, that's not what it says. It says to immediately accept students who have been unhoused.
So I'd like to say something. Go ahead. I think the most important thing right now to consider is that we're a basic aid school, and we're not funded like most of LA County or the rest of the schools in LA U S D. We're basic aid, so that means whether we take 47, 57, or 100 kids, we're taking the funds away from our students, our students that we already have. So we can only use as much as we can use, and I think taking 47 students is way beyond what we even should have taken, and I think it was very generous of us to do so. But I am very concerned that they, I'm glad they didn't lose their homes, and from my understanding, they lost their school, and that's why they needed to be displaced. So...
Right, and that qualifies. If you lost your school, you lost your house, or both.
Yeah, another, another thing to consider also is that we were urged, we were not mandated, we were not forced, we didn't have to do this. We are taking funds away from our residents, our students, to give to these 47 students. So I think everybody needs to understand that. And I'm just, you know, it's mind-boggling that, you know, we did what we did. I think anybody else would not even do what we did. They would probably ignore the situation because now the funds are going elsewhere. So I think the residency, what I want to know is, are all these 47 students, they're residents now? They're grandparents?
No.
Okay. So they're not residents?
No. They're enrolled under the executive order that allows the residency requirement to be waived through the end of the 24, 25 school year. They, each family that was enrolled signed an affidavit that they understood that they were only being offered enrollment through the end of the 24, 25 school year.
So it's temporary?
It is temporary.
That also concerns me that it's temporary, yeah. So I would rather have students graduate all the way through. I, I'm happy that we're helping them, but we, I don't think it helps a student to also change schools. So I think that's also not fair to the student.
And we've enrolled them now for, according to this executive order, until the rest of the school year. And so if there is an extension, or there is, that we can have another meeting, we can talk about what that future looks like. This was put out as an immediate need for students who have lost their homes or for, have, have been affected by the wildfires. It's very general, loose terms, that's why we're having the conversation. We are very much in line with Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District, and their process has been the same as ours.
But I want, I want the community to understand, Santa Monica's basic aid also?
Yes.
How many, how many students did they register?
I don't know the exact number, but it's very close to what we're doing.
And they're much larger also. They're much larger.
Yeah. They've accepted more students than we have, but they are larger.
Okay. Dr. Stern, you want to add something to this or make another comment?
So may I add one more thing to Mrs. Sabok's comments? When you were asking about whether or not they'll be able, be able to stay past the end of the school year, that's why for each student that we enrolled, there was a conversation with the parent and the high school counselor that was assigned to them so that they could understand kind of the impact of changing schools and what the classes would look like, and so they could make an informed decision at that time, whether or not to proceed with enrollment.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, yeah. Yeah, that's important.
I also want to speak to Mr. Stewart's frustration with the numbers. High school is so much different because we get a student who, you know, all students might need four years of English, they have to be in an English class, but every student comes to us with a different need. So it's hard to figure out exactly...
So it's hard to figure out exactly how many students and spaces we have. As we've gotten to this cap, we we realize like we're right there. We're at the number, teachers are right at the edge where if we bring in another student, and again, we won't know that until as the students come in because you might come in needing a certain math class or a certain Spanish class, things like that. So every transcript has to be analyzed by a counselor and fit into the puzzle we have available to them. And only then is when we know we have space. Right now, we are definitely, if we're going to bring in more students, we're going to have to create more sections, which costs definitely more money.
And I totally understand that, but I'm sure you can appreciate my point, though, of the interpretation of the document, which I am reading here, and I'm looking for the word displaced. And and I can see it three times here. But it is in no context, including in the final whereas paragraph, that says, given the extent of the impacts on schools, it is necessary to provide additional flexibility to accommodate students who have been displaced. The only thing that says obligated is in the section that says unhoused. Every other one, it looks like, you know, have a heart, try your best. But what we had talked about three weeks ago was the interpretation that we believed. And we all had agreed upon that. It was then LACO that came up with their interpretation, which that interpretation was not brought back to us for discussion to say, here's ours, here's theirs. Do we want to talk? Should we get lawyers involved, yada, yada, yada? It just was LACO's is, you know, is what we're going with. And now it it then was halted. And now it seems like, well, it's halted, but it's good it got halted because we're at the cap anyway. You know, so, you know, again, when it goes back to, you know, which version that we're looking at. If we were to open up the doors again, like in the morning, are we going based upon what we had talked about three weeks ago for unhoused? Or are we going based upon LACO's interpretation of anyone who's been displaced? So what is the answer to that?
Not even displaced, but impacted.
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 Oh, even better. So.
So, Mr. Stewart, I'd like to look at number six under where it says it is hereby ordered that. It does reference the displaced students there. It says, all LEAs are urged to extend every effort to support and facilitate the enrollment of students displaced by the fires.
Yes, urged.
Urged. I agree with you.
Yeah.
But but that's where the interpretation came from, and that's where we need to decide what we're doing.
But that being said, when this.
I think there's one other interpretation Mr. Stewart brings up, and that is the only one that I myself feel is that they are displaced from their home. That is, that is to me the most key word there. And then the word urged. So so many of these students that we took, unfortunately, were not impacted according to governor, but they were impacted according to LACO by the fact that they have to go on Zoom. Or the air was not good.
Well, like, for instance, my daughter didn't go to school one day because the air quality was so bad. Was she then displaced from her school where she could go into Pasadena and go to school there?
It depends on who you ask. According to LACO, yes.
But that's why we don't ask them, we ask us.
Right. But, Mr. Stewart, one thing we, some of the information we got when we met with our, you know, our our legal advisors was, he was suggesting that because it doesn't say mandated and it says urged, it does leave itself to interpretation. So I understand your frustration because that's very vague. You are urged. And so he delineated for us, and I think it makes sense, that because of that sort of vague description, we are able to come up with some sort of parameters that make sense for us. However, he warned us that there could be complaints. There could be, you know, folks who are saying, hey, that's not right. But we can, and I think should, look at the parameters that make sense for us that do not exhaust dollars for our our students. But we don't want to be unwelcoming at the same time. But I think that the takeaway from from the information we got during that session was very helpful, which is absolutely. It does not say mandated. So there's no reason why we can't set parameters that make sense and are also, you know, that's balanced. So we are welcoming our neighbors, but it's not going to overturn the apple, apple cart. The other thing, too, is that if I understand it correctly, Dr. Breggy, you're saying that if we were to go above the forty-seven enrolled, or I should say, the current situation we have now, forty-seven enrolled, it is not, it is within the staffing requirements we have and within the capacity we have. So there is, could we argue there's no dollars being spent on them?
Yes. This is, there's no additional.
No expense at this point.
They've been absorbed.
That's right. So if we were to go.
Other than incidentals.
Yes. Yeah, other than, right.
Correct.
But if we were to go above that, then that opens up the question of new new staffing in order to accommodate them. But at this time, we have not done that. So then we are at a pivotal point where we have to decide are, how much and to what extent, if any, are we going to go? Because it would incur costs.
Okay. I'd like to continue the discussion. Mrs. Manisherry, do you have a few comments?
Yeah, thank you so much. I just want to take us back for a minute. What happened is truly devastating. And I think that we are all still in shock from what it is and what it's going to be. And what I'm hearing from my colleagues is that the enrollment is something that we wish that we had been more in charge of because it is board policy. And so we had a discussion and I felt very much that we were, you like the word aligned. I believe that everybody sitting in this room that Thursday afternoon, we were all aligned, our board and our cabinet, and I was glad to hear that. So a subsequent conversation unfortunately didn't happen, and then the open houses started to occur, which seems to have been giving the overall community the wrong message, which is unfortunately that if we are allowing you to register, that means you're going to be enrolled. And so there's been a snowball component. What I would like to also focus on is that we are getting new residents every day at this point. And these are the folks that have been displaced from their homes. They have lost their homes in the fires, just like the family of four that I mentioned. They and their grandparents lost their homes and are coming or have come to Beverly Hills. And so I think that it's really important for the overall community to understand that, as Dr. Hasty said, the high school is a little bit of a puzzle that you're putting together based on each student's needs for graduation and college requirements to be met. And so then in the meantime, as we are learning more about these students who do not want to attend on Zoom, which there's no judgment there, I can respect that position wholeheartedly. We are also starting to get residents fill up. And so now we have this dilemma where are we looking left or are we looking right? Okay. I would like to know, because I spoke with a lot of Pally parents this weekend, I would say maybe a dozen, and I bumped into some as well. And this is comprised of families whose students have started, whose students are on the, and, you know, I'll call it the registered but not enrolled list and so on. I would like to know how many students of these eighty-seven have been getting the Ares emails? Do you know? Like, was there a, let's put it this way. For example, there was a big chunk of folks who were going to say completed their registration paperwork. And then a smaller chunk of folks who then started getting Ares. And I am interested to know if we know how how many are they? Is it all of those eighty-seven that are in the pipeline? Or is it just a handful from that registered in the first twenty-four hours?
Give me a second. I'll try to make that determination for you.
I can hold.
You're concerned about that because if they are getting that, it means they are sort of invited into the.
So I'd like to make a distinction. You're using registered and enrolled as different. We don't have a registration process. We have an enrollment process. You are what we call either pre-enrolled or fully enrolled. The parents that you're referencing are in the pre, the families that you're referencing are in the pre-enrolled stage.
There's a pause.
But they have not been what we would say activated, but they're in Ares, ready to go. So awaiting the last step of the review of that that transcript to then assign them classes and activate them in Ares. So for all intents and purposes, there are, there, there's a, there's a gap. When you enroll, there's an area called Ares Air, and that's where they're sitting. And then once they are activated and receive their classes, they go to the active part. So that, those families that are currently pending are in Air. But yes, they would receive those alerts because they're they're active. They're just waiting for their classes.
Can I ask?
No, they're inactive, but they're online.
They're in Ares Air. That's like, that's like about to go live.
So eighty-seven?
Yes.
But they were subject to the pause, correct?
Everyone has been notified that we are pausing enrollment, that we are stopping to review our resources, our facilities, the availability of classes. I personally emailed everyone.
Okay.
So there's a, how many did you say?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
So I I just do want to state for the record, and Mr. Russell Stewart alluded to this. If we were given the opportunity to set the policy on enrollment, my ideal scenario would have been that we would have made an announcement and welcomed all those who had lost their homes, whether Palisades, Pasadena, so on and so forth. And in, we would have put this forty-seven number on hold, and we would have welcomed those who lost their homes. And then we would have moved on to those who are understandably dissatisfied with the educational options that are provided by their current school. So being that that's in the past, I believe that our enrollment services department was kind of like frontline staff. And they put a lot of time and effort into pre-enrolling these families. And I don't know what was said in those conversations. Probably a lot of words of comfort were said. And those words of comfort or maybe confusion about the board's position or the actual availability or the LACO interpretation or the executive. Between all of these that happened, some families were given the impression that it was a sure thing without us being able to work through the numbers. And I believe that those families deserve an apology. And I am happy to be the one to apologize to adding to any discomfort that they or their student may have been or are experiencing as a result of this confusion and the fluidity of the situation. And I hope my board, I hope it's okay if I'm saying that on behalf of us. So now that being said, what I am hearing is if we continue to admit students and as we are continuing to get new residents, that we are also
Obligated.
Obligated, and actually then we will, we will be required, not urged, but required to start bringing on more teachers and spending more dollars for the classes, that they will not be absorbed within the numbers that we have available, then it's the recommendation of our superintendent that we should stop now. Am I understanding?
Stop what?
Yeah.
Admitting anybody. We are, we are stopped.
But they just moved in, Judy.
No, residents are residents.
Well, all right, but you didn't say it that way. So that's why I want to clarify.
Considering that more folks and families are moving into the district and we will be legally required to add teachers and spend those dollars, then right now our administration is advising us to continue with the pause. Am I understanding you, Dr. Breggy?
So, well, the direction I was given was to 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 stop the enrollment. And and we have a couple of spots for, we we know that the city ordinance had changed to with the short-term rentals, that has been suspended temporarily. The, so we know that we're going to get some new residents. We have carefully looked at to make sure that we can absorb those students because we always have students that are leaving throughout the year and also coming through the year. So we have made some arrangements so that we've got some room for that to happen.
You're referencing the city council's recent lift on the moratorium for short-term rentals, which is another reason why we're starting to now get new families coming in. I think, you know, I'm in the real estate world. My understanding is the uber wealthy immediately were able to rehouse themselves with rentals because money is not an object. And now everybody else is left behind, and those folks are starting to get insurance dollars. And so for rental and temporary accommodations, so now they're shifting east. Okay, so what I want to know is, is when we're being told we don't have room other than a little bit of room that we're holding for new residents, as a board, is there really any determination to make?
We're already.
Well, I mean, I mean, the number one thing is, is, is what is the guidelines? If twenty people decide to leave next week and we've got more openings, what what parameters are we looking at to add more people?
I think that's, I think we are sort of, we are, yes, residents. But I think that there are a lot of questions, and I feel like there must be some parameters that are established, either voted upon or proposed, because we all are spinning. I think we're spinning, and it's not clear because everyone is very reasonable here. And everyone on this board and you guys are, you know, have a good heart, and I know that. But we need to be reasonable. And I think what's happening is we're like, well, what about if it's this and this? We all have different opinions about Zoom. I personally think that a Zoom situation is not ideal, and I, and I would seek other remedies myself if that were the only option for my children. However, there are some families who have teenagers who very much are welcoming Zoom, just just so you know.
Yeah, they're getting jobs.
The flexibility, they like that their kid gets to be in their pajamas, whatever, you know, to each his own. But we can't forget that there are, there definitely, LA, or Los Angeles is a huge place. And we can't forget that there are a lot of schools, right, that are under the the auspices of LAUSD and Superintendent Cavalo. And I just, it's silent. It's like, where are, why aren't they opening up? I mean, I, I mean, apart from us, I'm just saying, why aren't those schools that are, my understanding, under-enrolled and available? Why aren't they exploring that?
I'm sure they are. They are because there's like over three thousand students.
Can I just add to that?
Right? Yes, yes.
These students that are rolling in our school, many of them could go to, because their primary school or their resident school that they would have had without going to Pally could be uni high, Palisades and so on. And we can't tell them what to do, but but at the same time, we don't need to take those students.
That's what I'm saying. Without one, I don't want to sound coward.
They have other options.
I don't want to sound coward, and I would be very upset if I had any of the situations that these families are going through. However, we don't want to leave other options that are less expensive or that could overthrow the balance of this school district if they are out there. And I know for a fact, I go to some of these schools.
Not not only that, they they should have some kind of document showing where all their students are going.
Right.
I mean, I, can you imagine, I mean, God forbid if we ever, you know, had that kind of, don't you want to track your students?
Right.
Like, let's say, you know, Sam Smith is going to Beverly Hills High School. Pally should know that because they're still trying to run their school.
Their teachers are still there and they're still paying their students.
We're keeping track of that.
I I think that.
But they must keep track of it.
There's, there's a system, there's a system called CowPads, and that tracks that.
Okay.
So you can only be enrolled in one district in the state of California. So if we enroll them, they're automatically disenrolled in their other district, but both sides can see.
So that's, that's exactly it. So all the students are going to be placed somewhere. They're not just going to sit at home and be zoomed if they don't want to. They'll find a school.
There are people zooming, correct?
There are people zooming. I think one thing that the board will, needs to take into consideration is that, remember, Palisades is a charter high school. So they've received an inter-district transfer, intra-district transfer to go from their homeschool, say from uni, to Pally because they did not want to. They didn't want to attend their local school.
Right.
So now that that school is not available, they have a couple of options available to them. One, they go through Zoom, or they may return to their homeschool. And remember, some of these students, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I have to interrupt. The funds follow them? In other words?
It depends on the funding of the district.
Not to us, though.
It's kind of what we're working on.
Let me finish. Let me, let me get, Dr. Hasty, I want to answer the funding question. But remember, some of the students also come from outside of LAUSD. You have students who are from Culver City. You have students who are from Santa Monica, Malibu, you know, Sherman Oaks, wherever. And then they've received that transfer to go to Pally. So there are numerous schools in that constellation of where a student may or may not be able to return. But remember, there may be some, some hesitancy to return because we initially elected not to attend that school in the first place.
Okay, and I, I would like, as everybody's pretty much, I'd like to sort of sum this up. Did you have something else to say?
No, we're good.
So that we seem to be in some agreement here, I hope.
Yeah.
I know what Mr. Stewart is raising in his issues, but I think what the, that the, going forward, we are closed to any enrollment that comes. we are closed to any enrollment that comes right now as a result of a student going to Pally who has not been displaced from their home, but would like to come to Beverly Hills because they don't want to go on Zoom. That, just let me finish.
Or the other options, that they, the constellation that you said.
Except we are leaving room only for people who actually move to Beverly Hills and can attack, establish residency.
Or lost their homes.
Well, that, that's part of the thing, that, but we haven't had anybody except one family so far, and they moved to Beverly Hills.
That's right.
So I need to bring up another issue, because this is where it's going to get difficult.
What's that?
We have currently in our board policy and a, a provision, that is the word I'm looking for, that allows people to attend our schools via co-residency. And they can indicate that they are co-residing with a family in Beverly Hills, complete an affidavit and have it notarized, and then we have provided access to our schools through that. So I need the board to opine and give direction on how we're going to respond to co-residency as it is specifically relates to the executive order.
Is the co-residence, how many days a week do they need to live with another family? Five?
And if they co-reside with the family, then we're legally bounded to allow them to come to our school? Or is it still with the?
The board can decide.
Can you explain how they got co-residency, just to give us an example of what you're saying?
Sure, so I'm displaced by the fire, I move in with Dr. Bregge. I would come and say, I am now residing at whatever his address is.
My house, let's say my house.
But can you define displaced under the example you're giving? Let's forget that D-word, okay, and let's be more specific. I have lost my home as a result of the fires.
Or I've lost my school.
I have lost my school.
Those are the, and we, our scenarios have been the latter. I've lost my school as a result of the wildfires. My friend who lives on Route six-two-four, six-two-five Rexford Drive, and I want to enroll.
They don't need to live with somebody because of the executive order, right?
Correct, however.
Or vice versa, where now they're residents, because they're here more than five days a week. Which means the executive order is not even applicable.
That would be the assumption. However, I need, I need for us to look in between the lines at that and indicate, you know, you're, I'm saying I live there, but how do we know?
Yeah, so what, how are you verifying their five nights per week of residency?
Well, I have not allowed people to enroll under co-residency yet, because I was waiting for the board to give direction, other than one family that did prove it. But it would require us to go there and, you know, visit, and, you know, we're going to visit eighty-seven families five times a week with two people in the department?
By case.
Do we have that many co-residency applicants?
So I'm anticipating that if we close the regular enrollment, my office will be full of people saying, I'm now a co-resident.
Are you allowed to say what that one that you approved showed?
We visited the home.
Okay.
So co-resident, does it also mean, I don't understand how it's different from just saying you now live somewhere here?
Because I didn't go rent a home or an apartment on my own. I moved in with somebody who's already an established resident.
They have a bedroom in somebody else's house.
People like that already, is that correct? That are put in a resident, an application?
For. We, we have for that attending, but we verified that information. But we have, I, I, I'm telling you tomorrow, I will, as soon as the doors open.
Are they living with friends or family?
Family.
In my opinion, colleagues, I think that there is no point in having a rule unless we're going to enforce it. And so what I mean by that very specifically is, if the co-residency requirement requires five nights of residing in that other family's home, then I think that the board should authorize, whatever you want to call it, dollars or whatever it is, to provide Mrs. Collins-Williams the resources to be able to investigate and verify beyond her or her team having to get up and go there, because I hear what you're saying. You're anticipating the new path. So once this path is closed, then some will seek an alternative path. And so we're going to be back having this conversation two, three weeks from now. She knows how it goes.
And you're going to be asking me why, rural people.
So what do you need from us?
I need two things. I need for you to opine whether or not we will accept co-residency as a result of the executive order, and if so, is it only be if they lost their home? Or if it's because they lost their school, number one. And number two, if we are going to accept any co-residency, then I need the resources to be able to go out and investigate.
And can I just jump onto the, the last conversation we had was that we would be providing a new policy that would have that information in it. So that was a, a three-pronged approach for residency, and it was in my superintendent's report, and we have talked about this previously, but that we are, with or without this, our district needs it anyway.
So I, I just, I just feel like if we're, if the board is going to make, give that direction, we have to look at it on all sides so that, so that we're in alignment, so there isn't another miscommunication.
Do you anticipate too many families?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Do you anticipate families utilizing this who have not lost their home?
It's been implemented for many years, yes.
Do we want to agree as a board that temporarily we will allow the co-residency to those who have lost their homes and are bunking with Beverly Hills residents?
And, and I would also add, please, that, that verification of the co-residency be completed prior to enrollment being granted.
How about like a FEMA card? I heard, for example, that Santa Monica, Malibu was requiring FEMA ID to demonstrate that the home was lost. I mean, or it could be someone coming from nine oh two seven two, as an example.
Or they, you know, some of them got these, these cards that they put in their car. I saw that permits them to go, you know, look at their decimated place.
To access the area.
Yeah, so that, that might serve as it, but I have no problem.
So are, are we as a board on the same page that we want to temporarily modify our co-residency so that it is available to those who have lost their homes?
Or their home is not accessible.
Or their home is not accessible. I'm okay with that. Anywhere, whether it's Pasadena, Altadena, or Pacific Palace.
As long as we have a way of verifying that.
So, and if I can make a suggestion, though. So the way that we should do that is because it's direction for right now that we're pausing those enrollments so that that doesn't happen overnight, and that people start to inundate you with the co-residency. And then that would be something for Tuesday night's agenda that we could bring with the policy change.
Okay.
Do you have a?
The problem is that we have people waiting to hear.
Well, you need your instruction.
So you already have people who wanted you co-residence?
Yes.
How many do you have?
Um, I don't.
Handful?
No, more than a handful.
You have four then?
No, no, those, those.
They've already been accepted.
Let me be clear, those, those were co-residencies that were verified, that were accepted already. I'm anticipating the majority of that list will then say, okay, then I'm co-residing. If, if, since the board has said no more additional enrollments under, under the executive order.
What about the grandparents' policy? Is that no longer?
No one's really, has really requested to enroll under grandparents', and grandparents' permits are not open.
That's something that is a very finite period of time. So that requires, for example, we're going to, we have to talk about it soon if it's going, because it sunsets. So we'll have to discuss whether we want to renew it or not. But the way it's been done in the last couple of years is that in the spring, we would welcome the grandparent permit applications, and then those folks are.
So we could open it up again?
Should, should you choose, but it doesn't mean that there's going to be availability for grandparent permit. It's a very finite number, correct me if I'm wrong.
Maybe for TK or the younger kids.
TK, my understanding is that they're changing the goalpost on TK so that more TK, more kids will be eligible for free transitional kindergarten. So you were not here for this conversation, and we also shared it with the city when we met with them to discuss the early childhood development. But we're expecting like one to two more TK classes, because now three and three-quarter age, three years and three quarters can come in on TK and turn four on, is it September first?
September first, yes.
So that's going to be interesting. I'll just say, having now seen the grandparent permit in effect for a couple of years.
I think the grandparent permit would be good for the younger.
It's good, but it's, you know, my understanding of the rule or the plan is that if in a grade level there are at least ten spots, then only up to one-fourth of those would go to.
Above ten, above ten spots. Because we, we save the ten spots for residents.
Yeah, and let's say there's an extra five, one, one-fourth of that five goes to a grandparent. But that's something that, that would not take effect until August.
And that's a whole other, we should probably go off on that train.
Yeah.
I just want to say that, you know, when we have our response ready to go, I agree with you. I think that there is an apology, and, and we're certainly, you know, we feel like we can authentically do that. I mean, this was, we were inundated. You know, we are still communicating with, with Laco, as I mentioned before, this is not an excuse, it's the reality. This is just like COVID mandates that are coming down from executive orders from the state and then interpreted from our county, and that's who is, directs us. And so I do feel in our response, that is an authentic, that we don't ever want anyone to feel like that they were accepted and that they were here and that we're, that we are pulling that away from them. This was moving quickly and moving in different ways, and there's different interpretations, and it's not over. People are going to have that, and there's going to be, we're going to have to, to work through whatever those next steps are. But I also want to just say that this is the kind of thing where if, if every school district did what we did, then there'd be a place for every student. And so I think by closing our doors, that wasn't the right answer. But I also think by accommodating people in a manner that is, is acceptable under the, the terms that we have, is, that is being a good neighbor. But I, I also think that taking anymore is going to be, that's going to be an impact to our budget and our bottom line. And that's a problem. But if every school district opened their doors and did what we did and provided the space that we do have available, then every Pally student would have a place to go.
And I know you said there, I was saying like, any effects right now for our budget with those forty-sevens new students? But, right, are, are those forty-seven new students, were they issued like our school IDs? Are they issued a, like, if they went to the high school, they're issued a Beverly Hills high school ID? So if more students start coming in, would that create, create a significant budget price as well? And like, and more lunch supplies and more different resources?
So one thing to consider about the, the lunch nutrition in general, we get full reimbursement for that. So that's not a huge impact for the meals. But, you know, incidental costs, yes, based on, you know, we've already run some calculations. It's not going to be too significant unless the door opens wide. Right now, I mean, you know, we're projecting or looking at what, what a hundred students would do, what that would cost us, you know, and, and, and there is a significant cost. It's under, you know, under the two hundred thousand, but remember, it's only half the year. So there's just things like that, but we, we won't know until we, you know, this actually takes place, we know what the number is. As of now, the most expensive thing we can do is increase staff. And I'll just say that if we have to get more teachers, more sections, that'll be the most expensive thing we can do. So even the Chromebook purchase, that was well worth our money, we're going to buy those anyway. And ideally, we're going to keep pushing on legislators for any excess costs we have to see if we can get reimbursement for this.
I mean, there must be some fire relief grant funds. I, I can't think of there is.
We're, we're spending a lot of time making contacts with the CDE. We've got another call tomorrow or the next day. So we're, we're staying on top of that, because this is actually a very simple measure that they can put in place, that the, the, the money follows the student, and it's that simple.
Yeah, so I just want to be sure that there's no confusion, that we're all on the same page. So let's recap, okay? So based on the various factors that we've discussed tonight, we are.
We are stopping.
You go right, yes, as Mrs. Marcus would say, we are stopping the enrollment of non-resident students.
Unless.
Unless.
They can prove that they have lost their home.
Yes.
And they can no longer live in that home, or it's inaccessible for whatever reason.
Yes, and in that instance.
Inaccessible for how long?
Well, they, let's say that.
Well, inaccessible as a result of the fire, how about that?
Uninhabitable.
There are families now with smoke mitigation that are, and I just know that from personal experience.
I'll give you my example, my mother-in-law's house is standing, and her neighbors is standing. And however, the entire area is destroyed, and she can't spend more than an hour there trying to grab some of her stuff because it's so painful. So I, I understand that. So, so I think we're all on the same page. Mrs. Collins-Williams, you and your team are the one that have to implement what we just discussed. If you have any other questions that might arise, please come back to us.
We're saying the co-residency.
Also, though, we have to talk about the, the co-residency. I also believe that this would apply to the fact that if the home is destroyed or if it's, they can't, it's impacted and they can't use it, that, and they want, are moving now to be co-resident with somebody.
Uninhabitable.
Uninhabitable. They can move in with some, where they can establish co-residency, and we will accept them. But they have to be able to prove uninhabitable.
So just for clarification's sake, if I have you correct, that anyone else that we admit, we're going to use the, if you've lost your home or your home is uninhabitable, is what we're saying.
That's correct.
We're going to go with the governor's order.
Our interpretation of it. So I just want to say for the record.
Well, they can be moving with somebody else too without.
Is exactly what we had talked about two and a half Thursdays ago.
Yes.
To a T.
But we are also now adding a little bit of detail with regard to the co-residency.
Sure, but the co-residency piece is a new thing that we've talked about here. But just for clarification, that our instructions now is identical to what it was in the first meeting.
Well, I would say at that point, we, we had our understanding, and then we had said, please go back and have more conversations about the matter and come, come back to us. But yes, it was, this is, I would say, consistent with our initial understanding. I, I'm with you there.
I don't think there's any misunderstanding right now, what we are agreeing to.
We're opening it up to co-resident only for students that have lost their homes.
Yes.
Right.
And also who really are co-residing. I mean, that's the other.
Well, no, wait a minute, you could have a parent, you could have a parent who didn't lose their home, but they don't want, they, they actually now buy or rent a home in Beverly Hills, and they can prove.
That's different.
But they would enroll as a resident.
But just for co-resident, we're going to open it up to students that have lost their homes.
Only.
And can demonstrate a certain.
Only have lost their homes.
Only have lost their homes.
Not uninhabitable.
Yes, only have lost their homes.
Uninhabitable.
Yeah, uninhabitable.
If you can't go back to your house.
Well, there's, okay.
If you don't have a home.
Basically, they lost their home, they can't go back.
Legally not allowed to go home.
That's almost the same, yeah.
Good?
Okay, so just so that, so that I'm clear, so that I'm not here in front of you again asking questions. Let's, let's talk about a scenario of uninhabitable, like what Mrs. Manichari just said. The home is still standing, but I can't live in it because of smoke.
For me, it's like a nine oh two seven two zip code.
It should be written by the health department.
But, but are we allowing co-residency for that?
I would, I would say that that is another version of homeless, because you can't go to your home.
Okay.
And, and for me.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I'm totally fine with adding nine oh two seven two into the actual language.
There should be proof, there should be proof that it's uninhabitable.
Even if your home is still standing, you still are submitting to FEMA for help.
Not always, though, not everyone.
But a lot of it, like the water is tainted, and who wants to live there where you have to go and get water brought in?
Or you're reaching out to your insurance to make your claim for your rental dollars.
They basically cannot sleep in their homes, so they have to prove that they cannot sleep in their home.
But I think that adding nine oh two seven two kind of is a catchall.
Yeah, nine oh two seven two is a good catchall.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Is it also the direction of the board that we must inspect co-residencies before providing enrollment?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes.
Expect, verify?
To see if they are living there, yes.
Eyeball that they're.
Now, another question is, if we're capped at forty-seven at the high school, and we're going to allow, okay.
I think we're good where we are. I think we, we know what we need.
I think also, you need to.
Covers everything else.
When you speak, or when the council, in taking his in, establishing with them, what is the deadline for the length of this, what is the parameter of the deadline of this? Because I think they need to know that it may, it's not go on and on and on. I think you need to make sure that they understand. It ends in the two thousand twenty-five at the end of the school year.
Yes, I agree with that, Mrs. Marcus, and every family has signed an affidavit that they understand that. But I'm going to also bring another item to the board's attention. As a co-resident, that may not be the case. So I want the board to be aware that they, there may be students who are allowed to continue. who are allowed to continue past March, May 31st as a co-resident, so...
But they have lost their home.
They should have to prove it past that time also. In other words, that to go back and revisit it, it's 2000, it's June. Now, we're going to revisit your co-residency.
For the, for the upcoming school year. I just want to make sure all of the information is discussed.
Yes, and also, if we open it up to co-residents to, you know, only students that lost their homes, can we make a deadline of applications? So, they know there's a certain amount of time to apply and that, not to keep going?
I mean, the board can, can do that.
Because they lost their home in, you know, the fires. So, they need to apply now and not like three months from now, four months from now, six months from now.
But I think the only issue with that would be if they need to get the required documents. It might take time to process all those required documents.